You're good to go, sir.
Okay, good evening, low planning board members. I think we have everybody. We're not missing anybody. The only visual I don't have is Beth, which I usually have.
I'm here.
Okay, so you don't have any...
You don't see me?
I don't see you.
You need to go to your gallery view.
I'm on.
I can see her.
You can see her?
Yep. There's a Beth on here that's muted. There you go.
I got her. Okay.
I hate not to be visible.
I'd hate not to see you. Any announcements, open session, a public comment from members? All right, seeing none. I have a opening statement. Basically directing this statement to anybody in the audience who read the agenda on the item lot clearing discussion 106.5 Route 6. That was a mistake on my part. It was supposed to be simply a notification to the planning board members that that particular situation I was going to bring up whether or not, as further down in our zoning bylaw, whether or not we should think about readdressing lot clearing. The planning board is not, at the present time, involved with any special permit before the planning board regarding 106.5 Route 6. The zoning board of appeals is not have any project before them or an application. The building inspector, as the enforcing agent within the town of Wellfleet, is the sole individual controlling that lot clearing. Whether legal or in line, that is his jurisdiction. Therefore, this is not a public hearing on 106.5 Route 6. This is a public meeting to discuss in the future lot clearing. That is all. So I want to let all the individuals that may be online here tonight at this Zoom meeting that there will be no discussion. I will not entertain any discussion regarding that particular piece of property. It was simply brought, and it being brought to the attention of the planning board as to whether or not we should look into future zoning. So something of this matter requires permitting or zoning bylaw changes. With that said, I will now move to the approval not required plan. And may I ask, who is representing the, or the engineering company representing 215 Herring River Road?
On mute, possibly?
I don't know. I'm looking to see, Rebecca, have you got anybody from Schofield Brothers online?
Let me check. I don't think so. And nobody has their hand raised. Nope. I don't think so.
Really?
Do you have a name rather than Schofield?
Robert Freeman.
Hold please. No.
I move we continue this to the next meeting.
A second.
Moved and seconded any discussion? Okay. This was submitted on January 14th. When is our next planning board meeting, Rebecca?
It looks to me, from my calendar, that it's February Wednesday. We're going back to Wednesdays, right?
Yes.
Wednesday, February 3rd. If we're sticking to the regular schedule of first and third Wednesdays of the month.
Okay, just so everybody knows. We prefer to have, and this is just discussion. We prefer to have an engineer or the owner present something. This, however, is an approval not required plan. It is understood to be signed if, in fact, there is simply no new road being created. So the 20, our next meeting is the 20th day. So we can get it in. Otherwise, we, it automatically gets approved on the 21st, the next day, or I have to sign it prior to. So for discussion, I think it was Alfred that moved?
That's correct.
Alfred. Basically because this, I'm looking at it as fairly simple. I'm having a hard time saying we can turn it down. Can you give me a reason why we should continue?
I don't believe, I still don't believe the plan is clean, and I would like the engineer to explain that to me. There's two options in this, Jerry.
Yes.
We can, we can continue it, as you, and, or we can bring it up at the next meeting. And if we don't bring it up at the next meeting, it passes on its own, and then it's not as clean for the applicant. Am I incorrect in that?
No, you're absolutely correct.
So it's not my position as a volunteer to do the work for an engineer if you have a question for him. He can be ready for the next meeting. That's why I made the continuance. But that's only my opinion.
Okay, well, it was seconded. Who seconded? David?
No, Beth.
Beth?
Yep.
I... Your reason?
I don't know enough not, not to let it just go by.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that, Jerry. You take a vote on that or not?
Yeah, I gotta take a vote on it. Is there anybody else that wants to weigh in on it? Okay, so it's been moved, seconded, to continue to the next meeting.
I do have a question.
Go ahead. Who's that?
I do.
Yes.
Would we reach out to the engineer? And request that he be present this time?
I can do that.
We can reach, certainly, David. We can reach out and ask him to be present, be present, number one.
Yes.
Alfred, have you got some specific questions you would want to ask him?
I have questions on cleaning this up. I mean, I think that if he can explain to me why he doesn't feel it's necessary, the last one, he did the exact same thing. You know, in the past, we slayed to this stuff. I'm not saying they were right or wrong. It's just that when we asked them to bring something back, they did. We mentioned in the last one that he was going to have to do something. We haven't seen anything yet. Nor does, maybe he doesn't have to bring it back, but I would like to get this out on the table.
Okay. If...
Jerry, I want to be very upfront with you. It's not our thing to present this case. It's his.
Well...
I didn't say that correctly. If he doesn't present his case, it can automatically be approved through the, through the mechanism if he's right. So that's his choice.
Yes, and that, that follows through. He does not, on an approval not required plan, the only thing we look at as a board, and Alfred, this is not for you because obviously you've been around so long, you know this. The only thing we look at is we're signing that no new roads have been established. Because that would then create a subdivision. So all we are doing is basically saying, no new road was created. Is the appropriate, is the appropriate, for example, in this case, two parcels that are both unbuildable, noted accordingly. That's it. I think for discussion's sake, because I've got to comment on it further, but for discussion's sake, since it's been moved and seconded, and if there's no more further discussion, we'll take a vote to continue it to the next meeting. No new discussion. All those in favor continuing?
Aye.
Aye.
Easier. Anyone opposed? Okay. We'll continue it to the next meeting. Now, for board members regarding this, if something happens, a snowstorm, whatever happens, all of a sudden people go out of town and we don't have a quorum. As chair of the planning board, I have the right to sign an approval not required plan without board signatures, other than that.
Okay.
And that simply is an endorsement saying, no new road has been created. To Alfred's point, he probably would like some clarification on a couple of things. Some, I don't know specifically what it is, but based on that, and since we're discussing it, since the chair has the ability to do that, are there any members who have a particular problem if that type of an event occurs? If I sign the plan as approval not required?
No.
Nope.
Okay. We've touched that base. At least I got you all on board. Thank you. Let's move on.
Jerry?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. David, I have a, I have a sound issue. I'm wondering if everybody could mute their, their, mute themselves unless they're actually going to speak. Because I don't know if other people hear it, but I hear a very intermittent, high pitched sort of tone that I've heard in the last meeting as well. I don't know where it's coming from, Rebecca. It just very, it ends up being very annoying, and I'm, if we all mute ourselves, it'll go away.
Is it constant?
It's intermittent. It sort of comes and goes.
David Rowl's phone.
Can we do anything about that?
As long as he knows how to unmute himself from his cellphone, we can mute him while everyone's talking. He just needs to be able to unmute himself.
If we unmute ourselves and see if that noise goes away, does that make sense?
Well, she seems to think it's David's phone, so it possibly is.
Why am I the black sheep?
Because you're the only one hearing it.
Tim, see David.
No, no, it's, no.
No, David Mead Fox is hearing it.
Right, right, right. I'm not hearing it.
And I don't hear it.
That's what I'm saying. David is hearing it.
David Mead Fox is hearing it.
Okay, maybe, okay, let's just go ahead. But if everybody could stay muted until they're going to speak, I think that is just generally a good practice.
As long as it doesn't take too long.
Right.
Partial lot release, Sam Hall Road, two lots. Anybody representing Sam Hall? Yeah. Who is it?
I don't have anyone raising their hand. It's supposed to be Tim Brady, and he knew he was on tonight, so.
What is with these people?
I told him he was on the agenda, so.
There's eight lots, there's eight lots on the covenant. There were eight lots on the covenant. We have released three.
Jerry, I'm going to interrupt you. I'm going to make the same motion.
I know you are.
I make, I mean, these people are getting paid to represent this stuff. They don't have to come to the meetings anymore, so let's move on without them.
You want to make a motion on that?
To continue it to the next meeting.
Second. David Mead Fox seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Move it to the next meeting. ADU, AAdu. I'm taking a deep breath.
You should.
Thanks, David. All right, board members. I don't want to seem like I'm coming out of left field here, but I'm not throwing David Rowl under the bus either. David Rowl has consistently said he has a problem with title, with state of Massachusetts Title V regulations regarding new construction. And everybody listened. I listened. I've got a call into town council regarding a specific question on that. Town council has not gotten back to me. I have sought out a few individuals with some input. I've gotten that. I have followed up with a request from David Rowl to read the state Title V regulations. And what I have come across consistent with David Rowl has said is that Title V states that all non-compliant septic systems are allowed to continue granted variances and they're fine. Those on property, those apply to properties basically built on prior to 1995. However, the definition goes on to say that any new construction after 1995, as far as dwelling units are concerned, must meet the current Title V regulations of septic and well. And non-compliant systems do not qualify to meet that guideline. So therefore, if I can put this, and this is just a point of information to the members. If I can put this in perspective with the information I have at the present time, where Wellfleet has so many 10, 15, and 20,000 square foot lots. Because we didn't change zoning to 30,000 until mid 1980s. Title V came in, in 1995, requiring 10,000 square feet per bedroom. So if I can cite an example, let's say that we have a 20,000 square foot lot that pulled a building permit in 2092. It's a pre-existing met Title V prior to the new 95 law. Let's say that septic system failed. Or they had to move their well. They went back to got a new Title V location, got it approved by the Board of Health. And it now was granted variances because of setbacks to well or whatever. So it becomes a non-compliant septic system, but the property is totally legal. The way I understand Title V reading is that if that particular piece of property which has three bedrooms, 20,000 square feet, non-compliant system, wanted to go and add an ADU or an AAdu. And that part really hurts.
Yep.
They would have to bring that septic system up to code with no non-compliant variances allowed. Therefore, if they wanted to take a bedroom out of the house and make a bedroom in a new structure which required a certificate of occupancy, they would have to have 30,000 square feet. What this does, if in fact town council concurs, this makes a tremendous amount of Wellfleet, except for wherever we have town water or where we have very large lots, probably in excess of 40,000 square feet, available for the Board of Health and for that client to be able to build an ADU. And it appears even an AAdu. There is no separation in Title V which exempts affordable housing. It's specific in nature. If you are building a new building and it requires a certificate of occupancy, and I'm reading it whether it's in the structure or a freestanding unit, because that's, if it's in the structure, it still is going to require, it's a new unit, it says dwelling unit in the definition. Much of what we as a planning board, as per the housing authority and members are trying to get to becomes extremely difficult and extremely limited in Wellfleet. Now, I am not saying at this moment in time or advocating that we abandon what we're doing. But I am saying that there appears to be under Title V, the state, the state says that the local Board of Health can make their Title V regulations more stringent, but they cannot make them more lenient. So ADUs work extremely well for towns that have town water and town surge. But it does not, at this moment in time, appear that is user friendly for towns that do not have town water or town surge. Now, as I said, Wellfleet does have town water in some locations. Most of that water is in the areas where there are very small lots, congested areas, where a lot of those properties are already over 15% lot coverage or very close to it. I still need to get more information from town council. I haven't reached out to Board of Health yet. I've been putting this puzzle together 5:30 still tonight. But it appears that this is something that we didn't see as members back when we wrote the bylaw for ADUs, AAdu's. And I think we did it after 1980, 95. So I guess my question to the board members at this moment is based on that kind of difficulty, based on the limitation that we have, does the board want to continue to write a bylaw? Does the board want to put it on hold until I get something from town council? What do the board members feel about this quandary, for a better word?
Jerry, I would say that it makes sense to get the information from town council and rediscuss it. That's my view.
Dave, yeah, I agree with David on that. I mean, no point in going forward until we have a little which way to go with it or how to go about it. So that seems a very pragmatic approach.
Olga?
If I understand you correctly, you're saying it's going to be much harder to produce a new unit? Or am I missing something?
Yeah. What I'm reading, Olga, and it's been collaborated with some respectable people that I said wouldn't, it was not necessary right now to take it into consideration, but people that knew zoning bylaws and building codes very well. That it's not impossible if we write a bylaw and the town of Wellfleet passes it, that a piece of property in Wellfleet, let's say, had 40,000 square feet, had three bedrooms, septic system, wanted to build a separate one bedroom or even a two bedroom and take one bedroom out of their house, that they could in fact go forward through the Board of Appeals, get a special permit. They could go to Board of Health without any problem and submit a Title V for a four-bedroom septic system, provided they met the simple 100-foot setback between well and septic. If on the other end, that particular property had three bedrooms on 20,000 square feet, they could get a special permit. The Board of Appeals does not go by septic. But the, it appears the Board of Health would have to turn it down because they would have, that particular property would have a non-compliant septic system. And because it was adding another dwelling or dwelling unit that required a certificate of occupancy. The state does not allow it unless it could bring it up to the current Title V, which would require 30,000 square feet. Now, there's a little, I'm not 100% first, like I hopefully am close to in zoning and subdivision and stuff. But I mean, there are, there are septic systems that if you're close to 28 or 29 thousand square feet, that you can do an alternative system and you can get, you might you might be able to get up there. I haven't got that kind of information, quite frankly, from Hillary yet. But the way it is worded, the state was specific in nature to say, okay, we're, we're, if you've got an existing house prior to ninety-five, we are never, ever going to take away bedrooms or make your house unbuildable. That's a taking. But we are not going to allow new construction, a renovation of the house, no problem. Other things of that nature, but a new dwelling unit without bringing that septic system into complete one-hundred percent compliant.
That's the key word, Jerry, is the new dwelling unit, because the house can be totally demolished by fire or voluntarily demolished itself. But you can add the new dwelling unit. That's the distinction. And that's the stumbling block at the moment.
Are you, are you saying a new, a new dwelling unit unless it meets current standards?
It would have.
So in other words.
So it would just cost more?
No, 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 no.
No.
Wait a minute, David. Wait a minute, David. Let's say, again, let's go back to so many lots. Let's go back to a twenty thousand square foot lot. They built it in ninety-two. In ninety-two, you had a thousand gallon septic system with a six-foot pit. And I may be off by a foot, but basically about three foot of stone. Ninety-five, Title V changed and went to ten thousand square feet per bedroom. And the new Title V regulations from the state went into effect with this definition. That particular piece of property, septic system failed, or they had to move their well. They were granted a variance because the new now leaching field was going to be closer to one hundred feet to their well or the neighbor's well. This, the Board of Health and Wellfleet had to grant the variance. They could not deny the variance on that property. But what happened is that particular piece of property became non-compliant as far as septic system goes in the, as far as the state is concerned. So therefore, if they chose to go and take a bedroom out of their house and want to do ramifications, come back to our AAD. Build an AAD, you or an ADU, one bedroom. Same money was no object. They were willing to spend a hundred and fifty thousand on the unit, two hundred on the unit, doesn't matter. They only had twenty thousand square feet and the state's saying, you, in order to get a new dwelling, which requires a certificate of occupancy, you must not have a non-compliant system. You must have a complying system under Title V, which requires a ten thousand square feet per unit. So no amount of money is getting them around that fact.
They can't make it more, make it compliant with new enhanced IA system?
You'd need, you'd need ten thousand square feet more of land.
The, the.
Which you don't have.
The simplest, the simplest way I can answer that question, Olga, without being a Board of Health agent, is the state says you have to have ten thousand square feet per bedroom. Now, there are alternative nitrate systems out there that, for example, on a smaller lot than thirty thousand square feet, you can get a, I believe, a compliant system. But what that is, it's not twenty thousand square feet, because now they're giving away ten thousand. To my knowledge, there was somewhere around, if you had twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand square feet and you wanted to do a nitrate system to pick up a third bedroom, you could. But not on a twenty thousand square foot lot. So this is, in my mind, regardless of the merits of what we're talking about, regardless of the needs of what we're talking about, we're coming back to basic Title V regulations, which the state has looked at and said, listen, towns without town water and town surge have a problem. And we can't compound that problem by new dwellings being built if you can't comply with the new regulations as far as Title V goes.
Jerry?
Uh, yes, who am I?
You, this is Rebecca. You have Helen Miranda Wilson with her hand up and Chairperson Ryan Curly with their hand up.
Okay. At this moment in time, and I respect both, both select people. All right, now I'm trying to get where the board is going before I enter a debate as to what's going on. Because that debate, quite frankly, is still going to come back to substantial research as far as Board of Health and Town Council is concerned.
Yeah, I think David made an appropriate motion.
Well, he made a motion, but it's so far, I, I think that was, and David Mead Fox, that may, I may have missed that, and I, if I did, I'm sorry. Was that a motion or was that just your feeling?
It was my feeling, but I'd be happy to translate it into a motion.
Oh, well, okay. We can still, just for the board members, and Bonnie, I see your hand, for board members and Helen, I see yours too, if this is made a motion and it's seconded, it will be open for discussion. So did, by passing the motion or continuing this discussion, doesn't stop discussion. There is still discussion. So I, I have to go to, okay, David, if you want it, if you want to leave it as your idea and pull the rest of the board, fine. If you want to say, no, I missed it, you want to make a motion, that's fine also. I'm, I'm just going to clarify.
I'd like to make a motion, a motion that we rediscuss this, Jerry, after you have gotten the necessary input that you're seeking from Town Council and maybe the Board of Health, I'm not sure about that part. And that once we have that information, we'll have a lot more to work with about this, this whole issue.
Okay. There is a motion. Has it, is there any of them who wants to second it?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion from members at this moment. Bonnie?
Yes, so I just have a, actually, at this point, I just have a question.
I got a lot of them, Bonnie, but go ahead.
No, I mean, this is very logistical. What is the deadline for getting a new bylaw to town meeting this year?
I would, I would have to beg to Rebecca as the new Executive Secretary, number one, but also I've got two select people sitting here that may know when, in fact, we, if we've scheduled a town meeting or whether it's going to be down the line, and if it's down the line, we have additional time. If it's not down the line, we are quickly running out of time.
So I can give you a little bit of information.
Okay.
As of right now, the town meeting is scheduled for April. I do know that there are going to be meetings taking place to discuss a later date so that the town meeting can be held outside. But I know that takes a special vote. But right now, they, they're considering moving it so that it can be outside again.
Okay, now, and this, I think, might be a question for one of the select people to answer, because I don't have the answer. Last year, the cutoffs, because the meeting was scheduled as normal for the end of April, it kept on being postponed, but to the best of my knowledge, no new articles were allowed to be presented on that warrant because it was closed. The meeting was, date was just changed. So I've got to ask either select person whether or not, and which one would like to answer it, if neither one to answer it, i- is that correct? Or am I incorrect?
Jerry, yeah, do you, I'll give, I'll take a crack at it.
Okay.
That we're going to have an agenda item, I think, next week, Rebecca, where we're going to discuss this and.
Correct.
Uh, nothing is written in stone. I think if we're going to have it outside, it's going to happen later. And what happened last year was that it became very hard to know when we were going to have it because everything kept changing. Therefore, there had to be a deadline for getting the articles in and then, you know, because it has to do with a printer and also because what's in the charter, so people can get it in time to have it mailed. But it happened earlier than it had to. So once we have a date, because we know it's going to be a problem again this spring, and reasonably, if we're going to do it outdoors, we're going to do it in a warmer month, you know? But we won't be doing it as late as we did last year. We're going to do it before the end of the fiscal year and so forth. And so I think that, sure, get this done. It's going to take some time. But you could get this article done even with the normal deadline, if you focus on it, which you appear to be doing. Thank you. And I'll hold my comments about the other thing until later, because I wanted to answer Jerry's question. Maybe Ryan has a different perspective on this. Thank you.
Ryan, do you have anything strictly on what Helen said on the, on the town meeting? Anything new on that?
Um, no, nothing, nothing to really add.
Okay. Helen, if I'm understanding correctly, that since we now have probably a little bit more time because we learned from, we learned from last year, if in fact, the select people decide that okay, we're going to go out to at least better weather outside so we can hold it, is it, and I rely on your opinion, is it your opinion that we may, in fact, not have that cutoff date, since we're going to extend it three or four months like we usually do in first week of March, where no more amendments can really go in because we're going to print it? Do you think that that might change this time?
Well, my opinion is important, are the, you know, those are the important two words. I'm speaking as one person.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Yeah, hold on. And like I said, wait for it, because my understanding was we were going to discuss this at our next meeting. Through to Rebecca. Um, has that been put on the agenda yet?
Yes, it is under business. It's the third item on your agenda for next Tuesday.
So I am personally going to push for us making up our minds, settling on a reasonable date later in the year, and then all your boards and committees and the select board itself will have some kind of deadline to look at for these things, because what happened last year was a terrible hot train wreck mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, now to answer your question directly, based on that information, you probably got it. I have a suspicion with additional input from those that we feel qualified that if the information comes in where I'm wrong or there seems to be a point I missed, that we still have time to write the bylaw, because the way we're thinking is there not, there's not that many changes to what Olga did paralleling the AA-DU that we couldn't kick something out. Did that answer your question, Bonnie?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that, that if, if, I just want the, the board to have the deadline completely clear and have thought through all the different things, you know, that we need to do by each meeting date so this, so that this actually happens. That's all. You know, I don't want, I, I am in favor of David's motion, so long as it doesn't cause us to, to be too late, you know, to, to make the process too slow.
Well, to answer that, and I'll get there, Olga, I see it. To give you a slight bit of history, the Planning Board has moved slower than some people like. But in that motion or that movement, we try and get it right. Because if we don't get it right and we move too quick and it gets on town meeting floor, the ramifications are extensive. So we've got to be sure on the information when we're doing it. Okay, Olga? Yes. You're muted.
Up there. What, I guess I fail to understand if this is just a part of the bylaw that will limit the number of lots that can do this. You know, if it's just, if some, some existing properties can still add units, why are we waiting to hear about this subs condition, you know, a subset of what is possible? Why don't we work on everything, as long as it's not putting an end to the whole bylaw? I mean, I am all in favor of anything new, meeting the best, the, the upgrades for septic and water. If we're still going to require that it meets those grades, but maybe some properties can't do it, then why are we waiting just to hear what happens to those properties? Or I'm missing something?
Jerry, can I answer that one?
Yes, you can, David.
I'll give it a shot. Olga, if this precludes or eliminates, let's say, I'll go draconian, eighty-five percent of the properties that might be available and only fifteen percent of the properties would be eligible. Therefore, if we pass something of that nature, it becomes or could be, become spot zoning, which is illegal. And we can't go down that road either. So it's a complicated issue, and that's why I thought David had a good motion to like, put the brakes for a second until we get some more information from Town Council. So I hope that clears things up, why we're not just steamrolling ahead.
David, that, that, that's good. I think that, Olga, to your point, and I will stress it, this information I've received or reviewed does not eliminate one-hundred percent chance of an ADU or an AA-DU being built in Wellfleet in the future. It, it, it doesn't do that. There are some people on town water or on large lots outside of subdivisions that have covenants strictly not allowing this kind of thing. I think you're a broader stroke, and I think it eliminates most of the national seashore as well. A broader stroke is it's extremely limited in its effect. And I think I would, if that's the case, have to review my position, number one. But there may be other members on the board that may want to review it and say, well, you know, if it's open to the entire town and anybody can walk in and get a special permit, if they've got a septic system that's got three bedrooms. If they've got a septic system that's got three bedrooms or four bedrooms and it's protected. That's one thing. But if all of a sudden, this is. Really extremely restrictive. I'm not too sure. How the majority of the members would vote number one and number two. Would it pass town meeting floor? So all I'm doing is trying to get out the information to the board members. To make a reasonable decision to whether go forward or to get additional information before we pound away at it. That that.
Now, would the additional information include numbers? How many lots?
No, you, you would have to literally go. Because the, the reason why it's, it's hard to take numbers on this kind of thing is how many people do we have? That have. Thirty thousand square foot lots, but septic systems that are non-complying that can comply. But they would not be able to add a new bedroom. They would have to take a bedroom out of their house. So trying to ascertain how many people would be willing to do that. Versus how many septic systems are on. Thirty thousand square foot lots, twenty thousand square foot lots, I would be really difficult to come up with. Never mind come up with in a short period of time that we have. It, it would really take.
But we're talking about spot, the. The possibility of spot zoning. So we have to have, know whether it is going to look like that or not. And I'm not sure the legal counsel is going to advise with that answer.
When asked the question, legal. Legal counsel. Will weigh in. And she will tell me it. That type of bylaw will appear to. Attorney general as spot zoning because you've limited just large lots sporadically. Or she may say, no, that's not spot zoning. I've had cases before similar to. Similar in other towns with the attorney general and they said, no, it's not spot zoning. It's an issue that needs to be brought up to town council along with. The reading of this title five.
Correct. Yep.
All right, Beth. You're on mute. Still can't hear you, Beth.
Okay, I'm, I'm on.
All right, gotcha.
So I'm uncomfortable with any opinion because I just feel ignorant. I don't feel like I know enough. To have a voice. And I really would like to know what town council has to say. And I would also like to know what the select board. Is planning in terms of a timeframe. So that we can plan accordingly. Uh, but a- as of tonight, I feel. Incompetent in, in, in offering any decision-making voice.
Okay. Any other member? All right, seeing none.
One more question. Was, did count town council report back on the? Tax exemption and the fact that we don't need. Perhaps don't need the AADU part. You were, said that they were in.
As of yet, because of probably Martin Luther King and because of whatever else is on the schedule. I would have loved to have said, okay, this, this particular problem reared its head. And I was able to reach town council. When I first learned of this, because I have another call into town council on something else. I think it was Friday when it started, I put a call in. I have not heard from them yet. So as soon as I do, I'm sure and know. Because I will be a pest if I have to. I will have something for the next meeting. But I think just in. Timing, it, it just, it just wasn't working for this particular meeting. Okay? I don't think I saw anybody else. I think Helen and I think Ryan wanted to say something.
Jerry?
Uh, Alfred.
But you can't see me.
No, it's okay.
You know, I, I'm not. Opposed to the by law, by law yet, but I think that. In order to discuss. Spot zoning. Because you probably automatically took it out of the national seashore. Um, and some of the other stuff, I think we, it wouldn't hurt. Providing we could get. Maybe a couple of board of selectmen who are sitting in the, online. To push town council a little better. We do wait a long time for town council. So I think that David's motion. Has merit providing we can get somebody to get it moving.
Okay. And I do have to, I, I do have to say, generally speaking, town council gets back to me in a reasonably. Reasonable good time. Especially in a matter of zoning and this kind of thing. So consequently. I'm sure we've got Helen and Ryan that. If necessary, if phone calls made, they'll, they'll help out. Um, I think Helen and Ryan, did you still want to say? Get involved in this or you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Ryan, can I go first? Okay, three things. First of all, David. Um, when we originally drafted this bylaw. What was it? Two thousand two, something like that? Um, it was very clear that it wasn't going to work everywhere because of the septic limitations. That's not spot zoning. To Alga's very clearly articulated point, the first point Alga made about this, if you remember. She's absolutely right. Um, this bylaw will apply in different places all over the town. That can qualify. Because of septic. Water. Right? And there are going to be places where it can't happen. It's just one of the many strategies for, you know. Supplying a portable housing and it's a good one. It's not going to be the magic bullet. There is no magic bullet. That's the first thing I want to say. Other words, David, I appreciate your bringing up the thought of spot zoning. But because it can happen anywhere and even with undersized lots. There are situations even in fairly small houses. Where no new construction, i.e. not even a wall inside the existing structure. Is needed. Just a door. And another kitchen. And the door may already be there. And I've been in spaces thinking about this for years. That. You could see that two places could happen in the same small structure. Let's remember, new construction doesn't mean a new freestanding unit. It means. Anything that's built new and Hillary. Absolutely gave me that information when I was talking with her about something I might do in my house. Housing. I said, if I put a wall in this room. Will I have to go to title five? And she said, yes. And then she went into detail. That's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to say is. That. I think that you should try to get this. On the town meeting warrant and that you have the time to do it and that even tonight you could work on two sections. Without advice from town council. The person you really need to have advice from. And I was at a race water committee this morning where this was brought up. Is Scott Horsley was working for the race water committee and Hillary. Because. To let the left hand know what the right hand's doing here, the guys can be the right hand. Um. They are looking at having. The Board of Health look at. And just looking at anyway. Having an IA system, you know, you know, a new, one of these new systems. Which. Don't have title five requirements. They do just as good a job. There was a whole rundown about the nitrogen, you know, mitigation. This morning, I've heard it like a dozen times, worked. Actually, four or five times already in the last year. And. It makes a big difference as to what you can have on a lot that's undersized. Um, you can get more gallons per day. Through a system like that legally. So that's the reason I put in red whiting in the draft that Alga submitted to you. Or that I suggested you absolutely have to put in there is. You don't say it has to have title five. You say title five. And/or an IA system. And you might want to not refer to it as IA, but to use the whole term. It's always six and a half. We can ask Hillary about this. So Jerry, town council may give you some good advice. But I feel very strongly. That you guys have to understand what the race water committee is doing now, the fact that we have to address what's going on with the water fed. And how that's going to happen in relation to this article. Right? Other words, you don't want to poison the earth under any of these lots. Whether or not there's sound water supplied to them. And Hillary can tell you, Hillary could have given you the answers right now about it. The one thing that I thought about a lot since the first reading I had of this before the last meeting that you let me participate in, thank you. Was the last section, which is about enforcement and I strongly feel. That you should just have the language that's in the AADU. Um, bylaw because the other parts of it, which as you remember, I said, that's what town council really needs to look at. I think it's. Way more unenforceable and you should just have the straight up. Enforcement language that you have for a lot of zoning bylaws. Just refers you to that section of the existing zoning bylaws. The whole administrative dysfunction of having. These programs for the tax exemption setup managed is not. Your purview or the ZBA's purview. The last thing I wanted to say, and this is really important and Jerry, you've been in meetings where, you know, town council. Can come to one of your meetings. And although you are hundred percent trustworthy to convey. What town council tells you, and I hope you take notes. Even though you seem to have a very good memory. I think that it's very useful to, if you're going to use town council at all. To have everybody on the board. There when town council is giving answers. And just the collective brain always works better. And I think you get more bang for your buck. Um, thank you. Those are my three points.
Okay. If the board chooses. After I talk to town council, that they want to talk to town council in a Zoom meeting. Depending on what they say, fine. This information I'm getting is not just from town council, will be just from town council. It's from a number of people. One of the things that concerns me deeply at this moment. Is that the definition of new construction is no increase in the number of dwellings or dwelling units. If in fact this is accurate, no ADUs were built. I'm sorry, no AD, yeah, no ADUs were built. After two thousand and two. Either in a house. Or freestanding. Without a new alternative system. They all were granted on existing systems. Which appears to be totally illegal.
Totally.
Yeah, that's, that's the frustrating part.
If we made a mistake that we didn't realize we made a mistake, I'm not looking to compound that mistake without going slowly. And getting all the information. So. I understand what you're saying, Helen. But. This is what the planning board does and, and I believe this is what the planning board is going to vote for and we'll move forward. And we'll get the information we need. And Hillary probably had some answers. I'll get to her when I can, but. Right now. I can also read zoning stuff pretty damn well. Ryan, you got anything?
Um, yeah, a few things. First is that, yes, it probably won't apply to all of the lots or all the parcels within the town. But we're talking about a situation where the town is chronically short in housing. Um, and that at this point, some is better than none. I think, I think it is really demanded by the townsfolk to at least have a presentable article for this, this year's town meeting. Since, um, and then I also ran some numbers really quickly. Um, since two thousand, approximately, or since between two thousand and two thousand and nineteen. There have been five hundred and thirty-four new constructions within the town. Those are new starts. From a lot that wasn't previously built. Um, I don't have, I mean, the, the data that I have access to is. In the nineties, it covers from nineteen ninety to, to two thousand. So I just left that out real quick. Um, but that represents already approximately twelve percent of the overall housing stock within the town was constructed. Since two thousand, five years after, um, title five went into effect. Um, and conceivably, all of those constructions, if they meet all the other guidelines, some of them won't. We already know this, you know, there might be other issues that prevent an ADU from being instructed as site. But that already represents a large number of potential sites that could serve as housing for some of our residents. And I, I just think we really need to keep it in mind that this is a need now. It's not a need tomorrow. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Alga?
Um, if we are asking town council our questions, I am, I keep. Worrying about what I call the genie out of the bottle. When we allow ADUs. For resident, for year-round apartments and then they decide not to have. A year-round, uh, resident, but go seasonal. Yeah. It is hard. To figure out, let's call it the penalty. Are they, I mean, I wrote some suggestions, but I, I don't think they're very good about removing the features that make it. A second, an accessory unit or denying the right to rent seasonally. That's really. Difficult. I just put it out there because. How do we, I, how would one deal with that? And I would like legal counsel to look at it. Does that make sense?
It, it makes.
I think.
It makes sense. It makes sense, Alga. However. And I've been, I think I mentioned to the board members at the last meeting or the meeting before, I've been in touch with Paul. Building inspector on a. In general conversations and one of those conversations was on a particular structure. That was built. With a full kitchen. Neighbor complained. And he was called in. And the way the state regulations read is. You're allowed more than one kitchen in, in a, in a single, in a. Residential property. The only thing you can really do in order to, let's me see if I can back it up. The only way you could have gotten that. ADU. In the past. Was that you got a special permit. And you passed. What the Board of Health was. what the Board of Health was reviewing at the time and said, okay. So you were then able to get a building permit and proceed with that unit. The enforcement is that if you don't stay in the program, you can't rent it as a year-round rental to anybody you so choose, or however you choose. However, the building inspector, because you have in fact, passed the Board of Health regulations that they were applying for bedrooms, those bedrooms are perfectly legal. You took a bedroom out of the house and you put it into that unit. That's a legal unit as far as bedroom goes. The bathroom is legal. The kitchenette is legal. Indirectly, the kitchen is legal, except the state says you got to take the stove out. So that's what happened on that particular unit. The building inspector enforced it. How they rent that, after that, whether it becomes a B and B or an Airbnb is allowable. And those are the regulations that happen. You know, I think some people may have thought, well, gee, you got an AADU permit, special permit, and it went on record. And you can't rent it like that anymore and get a tax benefit if you don't use it that way. Okay, fine. The new, the owner choose, or the new owner shows, I'm not going to do it anymore. But I'm going to rent it as an Airbnb because Airbnbs don't cook in there anyway. And I'm going to rent out the bedroom. And it's still a legal unit, just like a studio or a room over a garage, which is a bedroom. So we have, we have those kinds of problems that follow with it. Did I try and, did I get the answer to your question? I'll, I'll ask council, but that, that seems to be what council is going to say. You can only do so much.
Okay, I understand that. And my further thinking is that perhaps we have to make an ADU by right. But we can go there later. I don't know any way around it. You know, how do you make, you're going to give them a unit anyway. Essentially, they're going to go seasonal with it, which is, you know.
Because if they, if they put, they're going to go seasonal, but if they put a year-round tenant in there, that same neighbor who complained complains again. The building inspector says, okay, fine, they may have reinstalled the oven. I mean, a year-round people with a child or even two adults, they get pretty tired of renting, I mean, just cooking out a convection oven. I know there's no ovens today, but there's only so much we can do under the laws of discrimination and, and what they allow us to zone.
So, so Jerry.
Beth, I'm sorry, yes.
I, I know people who have rented in Wellfleet with allocation.
Okay, are these questions all to David's motion? Does everybody feel they're in line, or do I need to call a question?
No, we're kind of diverging a little bit, you know.
Well, I, I'll come back to what I said before. I don't know enough to really have an opinion. I know people that abuse this.
Yes.
Homeowners that abuse this. And I don't know if there's a way through the planning board to prevent that abuse and, and encourage how year-round housing. I, I feel like I'm at a dilemma.
That's, that's, I think, a question. Beth, I'm going to kind of side with David. I think that is certainly a question. If we decide to continue with the discussion of an AADU or an ADU. I think that's well in line for discussion. I think within the David Mead Fox's motion and David Rouse's second and the discussion, it's really to postpone the discussion.
I agree.
Till we come back with town council. So this is something new. I saw, and maybe I just recognized that I saw, and I'm trying to be as respectful as I can to the, to the select people that run this town, is that, that I see Janet has joined it and I didn't know whether or not I missed her. Is Janet, you got any input or you just there? She's mute.
Nope, nope, here I am, here I am.
Okay.
I'm just listening and I've actually taken notes. And I'm going to email you tomorrow with all my notes because I came in late because I had another meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'll look forward to them.
I know, I know. It's good to see you.
I can't see you, but you can see me. Good.
Well, here we go.
Okay, without anything else, guys, I'm going to call the question. There you go. All those in favor of the motion to postpone until we get more information from council and other sources, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, I'm going to work it backwards. Any opposed? Alga, did you vote or abstain?
Abstaining.
I didn't cover that base, Alga. Okay, so we have one abstention. And the rest in favor? Is that what you get, Rebecca?
That would be six, zero, one.
Yes, thank you. Alfred?
It'd be nice if town council's answer came back for our packet.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make a request for the, related to this, for next meeting's agenda?
Absolutely.
If, if town council does not get back to us by next meeting, I hope that on the agenda, we will still go through the draft. We will, in any case, devote the time to go through the draft and make all the comments that we would like to make, assuming that it is worthwhile to have, to have this bylaw be brought to town meeting.
I will put it, Bonnie, I will put it on the agenda so we have the latitude to do most anything.
Great, yeah. And, and maybe I would ask Rebecca to just include it in the, include what we're commenting on again in the packet electronically.
I can do that.
Great, that would be great.
Okay. I took, I hope I clearly stated the position and the mistake I made on lot clearing discussion 1065 Route 6, board to discuss future of lot. That was not the intention. It is not our business. It is not before us. The building inspector is in control of the situation and is on top of it. So it's not, it's not in front of the planning board at all. What is in front of the planning board? Based on, I'm sorry?
Well, I have a question, Jerry.
Okay.
You know, maybe, maybe I'll make a motion to definitely postpone that so we don't discuss it, so that we can get to the zoning bylaw without interfering with that lot itself.
Alfred, I have absolutely no problem if you want to make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone lot clearing at 1065 Route 6, so we can continue with the zoning bylaws regarding lot clearing.
Any second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Could some, I'm sorry, I, I, I think I had a little trouble following what.
Okay, Alfred made a motion just to make sure we touched the base, not to discuss the bullet of lot clearing discussion 1065 Route 6, board to discuss future of that lot, because it is not before us and should not be before us.
Oh.
Okay? We have no authority over that. What we do have is the next bullet, we can discuss lot clearing, but we really can't discuss that particular ramifications of that law. So that's, I think that's where he's going. Is that correct, Alfred?
Yes, I'd like to discuss lot clearing, but I don't want it to interfere with the rights of the person who owns the other lot.
Yes. So it was moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Unanimous, okay. Lot clearing. Obviously, it appears that we had a situation in Wellfleet that was extremely visible to most all of us to pass along Route 6, that most of what happened was by right under our zoning bylaw. I was in discussion quite a bit with the building inspector. He took action. It is in his bailiwick. It is in his power. He handled it. So I, I asked his input coming out of Dennis because he could only do so much in Wellfleet. I said, well, what, what would have happened with a situation like this in Dennis? And he said, Jerry, he said, we have a bylaw that basically provided lot clearing on trees, simply clearing, no moving of fill, no moving of anything else, no grubbing of trees less than four inches. So they allow somebody basically under that purview to go in. We didn't get into it too deep, but generality, generality, and he's going to fall with the board, the zoning bylaw, or we can pick it up, that Dennis has, and I'm sure a number of other towns have, is say, okay, if you want to do some selective clearing on your lot prior to getting building permit, prior to going to a site plan review or a special permit hearing, you can do some clearing on brush and trees less than four inches. So for the most part, he's saying, Jerry, that prevents a clear cutting. That prevents somebody from going in, stripping every tree, every bit of brush, down a bare ground without having to pull a permit. It seemed to have worked. So based on visual sightings of what I had seen, along with a majority of the town of Wellfleet that is here at this time of year, I felt it was probably a good time to bring to the board members the question on whether or not we should tighten up lot clearing bylaw. And I think we have this kind of bylaw in the National Seashore, either across the board, all zones, or zones that require or are located in commercial, resort, residential, or along Route 6. So I, I basically am throwing it out to members to say, okay, now that Alfred's made his motion not to cite a specific example, but knowing the visual, what's the board's feeling on how to either continue as is, business as usual? Or should we take it, take a look and say, wait a minute, this is really not what the town of Wellfleet is looking to have. And, you know, sometimes things happen that most people don't do, but some people do. Beth, I think I saw your hand up first.
Yes, so you know, I'm most familiar with Provincetown rules. And in Provincetown, you can't cut a tree, a single tree, that's three inches or more without approval. Ground clearing is just extraordinary. As I've driven by the site, I'm appalled. And I'm particularly appalled that they had the freedom to do that. So yes, I mean, we, we need some standard. Somewhere between you can't touch anything that's three inches or more on your own property to you can't clear a lot. But we clearly need to have some standard of behavior for, for the town of Wellfleet.
Okay, David Mead Fox. David?
You're muted.
I completely agree with that, sorry.
Okay, David.
I also know that there are, I'm sure there have been many cases over the years, but there's also another case at a newly purchased property in the corner of Pine Point Road and Pine Point Way. I happen to live right near there, where most of the lot was in the last month, clear cut. And so it's something I see, I look at every day, lots of stumps sticking up. A huge section of the lot is clear cut. Everything cut down. So to me, the fact that that's okay to do, then we ought to at least see if there's something we want to do about those sorts of situations on Route 6 or anywhere else. The zoning, what zoning areas it would apply to, as you say, Jerry, is a good point. And I would like to get into the conversation, maybe make a new bylaw.
Okay. David Rouse?
Yeah, what does complicate this is there again, I don't think we have enough information, but what we've had over the last 10 years anyhow, is a tremendous amount of solar installs. And in such, a lot of homes do liquidate a lot of trees for the purpose of solar gain or making them viable. So we would certainly have to take that into consideration as to what can and cannot be cut, because, you know, if a house wants to have solar and if they need to lose eight trees in front of their house, that's a conundrum. Don't have an answer for it, but it is a reality that people will cut for solar gain for a reason. So we promote that, but we.
Uh, Beth?
People cut for lots of reasons. That's not the same as clearing a property.
No, no, I'm not saying that's one of the reasons.
You cut sick trees, you cut trees for lots of reasons. But to clear a property is a different thing.
Well, that might be where you address is clear cutting, but yes.
Yeah, it's different.
Right, so Beth. Yes. There's clear cutting and then there's.
Property management.
Thank you very much. There's good property management and bad property management.
Exactly.
You know, and I'll, I'll, I know I'm in a public meeting, but I'll say it, I'm, I'm a culprit. I mean, I've got alpacas in one of my pens and a couple of pens, and my alpacas can't, can't take pine and oak trees because the, number one, the, the pine, they rub against it and their coat is, just coats are worthless. And they can't eat oak, acorn and oak leaves too, and too much because it, it'll kill them. So I, I've had to clear cut their pens.
So I cut down 13 trees this past year because they were dead and dying and, and a problem on my yard, but I didn't clear cut. That's a different thing.
Yep, and I think that's, and that's why I'm, it's, obviously, that's why it's before you guys tonight, is I think there's a number of problems. But I think there are solutions. I think there may be unfortunately some red tape that has to go in. But you know what? I mean, it's one thing to clear trees for the David Rouse's point, that for. it's one thing to clear trees for the David Rau's point, for for solar, and that makes sense. But it's another reason just to cut them all. Because it's so much easier to move around the lot on a commercial lot, because you're going to use it for a commercial property, and you're gonna make out a lot line and lot line.
Exactly.
So and you don't even know if the Board of Appeals is gonna grant it. So that's why I mentioned the zones, David McFox, is should we be looking at particular zones along Route 6 corridor? Should we be looking at setbacks of 10, 15 feet where you don't touch unless you have to get permission? I know subdivisions, for example, that I did, you don't take any trees down other than after I approved the site location for the house three inches or less. Is the only thing you can take down. I can grant permission to others if they want to put solar up, or they want to put up tennis court up or something of that nature, but you just don't give them a free hand to let them do it. Uh, anybody else?
I have a question.
Alfred?
In our zoning book, and I haven't looked which I'm at fault for, we got a green belt there in the commercial district.
Yes, I talked to Paul about that.
Well, my question is to start with, is that something that needs to be increased? Because if that way there, you are technically allowed to cut things down, but you need to re-vegetate to meet the the requirement. And at that point, the zoning board would actually look to see what you were removing and what you were putting back, and at that point, you actually may put back a better shield for your neighbors than what was there originally. But at this point, to the best of my knowledge, the 25% wasn't even followed. And I'm not saying that that's, my question is if the 25% is followed in the future on most lots, and we bring that to 30% or 40%, because it's not the whole lot, is that something that might take care of some of these needs in the future?
Paul's take in reading the zoning bylaw. And with all that I, and I'm not making excuses to the board members, but with all I had going on the past five days, I wasn't able to get all the, into all the zoning bylaws, but what Paul read and we conversed on is he interpreted that 25% on commercial properties as they could take it down, but they have to negotiate with the Board of Appeals to re-vegetate in some satisfactory manner with the Board of Appeals. I, I think if the members feel we should look at this whole thing, I think we need to look at that particular clause and maybe look at it from a point of view like you were saying, Alfred. Under no circumstances will you take down 25% or 25 feet off the lot line on commercial districts before a special permit is issued and negotiated for replanting. Because otherwise, they do exactly what they, what some people would choose to do. I'm gonna take it all down and once it's down, the worst they can do is make me replant it, which I've got to do anyway, but I'll replant it with low bush.
Well, my question, Jerry, is if you strip a lot um, to get the most benefit out of it, which I understand, it may not be unrealistic for the percentage for the front of the lot to be, but the entire contiguous of the lot to have different percentages. Because in that way there, we're not limiting somebody to using their lot as much, but we are making them do planting as we've designed in the C2 district. If you're gonna use it as for fishing or any of that stuff, you either put a fence up or you plant it.
Right, so we, we actually could look at, you know, one way to look at it is to say, okay.
I guess, I guess my question, Jerry, is-
Commercial property is gonna require a 25-foot setback as a no-touch and 10, 15 feet sideline and real line. Any differential would be at the Board of Appeals discretion at a special permit, but still, XMR percentage has to be retained. So there are, we can get into this, and that's why I was saying, we can get into it heavily or more heavily into commercial districts on such a state highway. Unless in residential areas, or we just blanket across the board, but then we also gotta have to look at, okay, who's going to be the decision maker? And who do they go to when they want to take down trees? For solar, because solar is by right on a single-family residence.
Jerry?
Yeah, who was that?
That was David.
David, yeah, no, I think at one point, at one point in time, and I don't know if this is true still, the uh, we did have a position in town, it was the tree warden. And I do believe that got rolled over into the DPW director, and I don't know if that's still valid or current, but that's historically where that went.
That's still current, David.
The purveyor of trees.
Current, yes. So that-
Yeah, but David, you know where that's gonna go.
Yeah, it's gonna go south, yeah.
But I, would I, the other thing I wanted to point out was there's a huge difference in the commercial district between a single-family home and a business. Usually, a single-family home isn't gonna strip a lot. So I mean, if a single-family home strips a lot for solar, that's different than it being a contractor's yard. So I mean, I think you have to give the zoning board some latitude to decide what the highway is gonna look like. That's all.
Jerry, Janet Reinhardt has her hand up.
Okay, Janet?
So, I talked to the building inspector too at the very beginning, and he said that when you are allowed to cut down trees, as many trees or whatever you want to do on your lot unless it's a scenic road, but that he did a stop-work order when it was a removal of topsoil and digging holes, and that became a whole nother thing because this person who is a developer from Truro
I, Janet, I can't talk about 1065.
Oh, we're not, okay, so, okay, you're right, you're right, so-
And the building inspector confirmed with me, yes. You, when we talk about lot clearing, the way the definition that he's reading it, our definition is you can go down and take down trees and you can pull the stumps. But once you start beyond that point, you are now into a zoning bylaw
Right.
that prohibits anything much further. So you can, in essence, clear cut, take down all the trees, scrub those stumps, but when you go any further, whether residential, commercial, R1, any district in town of Wellfleet, there is a point where you can't proceed any further without a building permit or a special permit.
Right, so that is part of the protection we have now. And in reference to what David Rau was saying, is there's other places, and this is for your consideration, there are other places in the state and other states that have, you know, way more open land. And the state and solar companies are going in and clear cutting forests to put in solar panels. And there's a real balance there. I don't know if we're ever gonna have that problem here. But, you know, you're cutting down a lot of trees for solar, and yet the trees are as advantageous as the solar panels in many cases. So that's something you can consider if you're actually gonna consider this.
I think we've controlled, or I think we have good control in the limitation on most of the major photovoltaic, like the dump.
Yeah.
Because it's extremely limited. I think it's more for it seems like if we wait for the special, and this is nothing against the Board of Appeals, but it seems like nothing can be done at this, unless at the present time, under the present zoning, on anything that requires a special permit, nothing can be done to stop clear cutting before they even apply for a special permit.
Right.
So and that's, you know, let's face it, you can build a single-family residence, clear cut the lot, you don't go for a special permit. So it's almost like we need to think about limiting what we want to allow before someone go in for a special permit.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. So I think I'm getting the gist of almost unanimous that it's a subject that I think all the members want to delve into. Now, it's a matter of it needs some individual thinking as to, do we do it across the board? Do we do it in certain districts? Do we do it on scenic roads and state highway and summer buffer? Or no more than 20%? And before you start, you have to get a building permit. I mean, at least that way.
Someone's paying attention.
This is, I'm thinking outside the box, at least that way, it's like pulling a re-roof on a house. You walk in, pull an easy form, and the building inspector for 25 bucks gives you a fix-it or whatever on your roof. It's a matter of at least there's a plan submitted to say, okay, this is what I'm doing, but you need a permit to do it. And he says yes or no, and you're gonna have to go for a special permit anyway, so therefore, I'm gonna limit you to X, Y, and Z. Those are the things I think that we need to look at, maybe not only Dennis, but some other towns.
Yeah, Jerry, I was thinking that your point about Dennis is very instructive and Provincetown from Beth too. It seems to me that we could go a long way towards not reinventing the wheel. There are gonna be special things about our town and special decisions that we make. If we could really get a lot of good information from other Cape towns, not only what their bylaws are, but what the effect has been of those bylaws. That would really be useful.
Okay, that's where we'll go. Anything else on this one? I'll get it on the next agenda, but you guys think?
Hi, Jerry, it's Helen.
Helen, I hear the voice.
Yeah, yeah, I am forwarding to you right now, Mass General Law, all about trees, and also the section that you referred to earlier, which is in our general bylaws. And there's some special things in there that you might want to use for a baseline. Also, I'll dig up from my files, something that was sent to me by, you know, what's his name, bylaws that have to do with restricting cutting of trees in other municipalities in Massachusetts. I'll dig it up and send it to you. I've been interested in this for a long time, thank you.
Oh, Jerry?
Yes, David Rau.
Can I have a question to Helen?
Yes.
Can I have a question for Helen? Where did, because you're at least a year older than me. Where did the tree warden position go?
Really, much smarter. Oh, so much smarter, so much older, okay.
Where did the tree warden job go? Do you remember? Did that disappear?
But the point is, I got back into this in the last year.
The tree warden's Mark's job, we all know that.
That's, it is his job, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's not a bad, but you can't cut down trees in certain situations. And I'm just gonna send it, and I hope you all read it. Rebecca, through you, Jerry, Rebecca, will you, I'm sending this now, will you forward it to all of them, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Okay, board members, next article. We are in the midst of interviewing Rebecca, you can certainly help me if I make a mistake. We're in the process of getting applications and-
Oh, I'll help you.
Bet you will. And filling the vacancy of Mike, the Assistant TA. Am I too late? Have we filled that position?
No, the final, the deadline for the applications is 22nd. I can tell you that I've seen some applications, there are quite a few people that are applying. And I did listen to you on your last meeting that you, one thing you really are looking for is a town planner, if I am correct. So that is something that I have been kind of reading through the applications to make sure that there is definitely some experience with town planning and with planning in general.
All right, board members.
We'll get the interviews probably next week.
Thanks, Rebecca. Board members, that comment came from me. I was not representing the viewpoints of all the members of the planning board. But I gotta tell you, as chair, I've seen from the time I've worked with Rex Peterson years ago as our town planner, assistant town administrator, through our last assistant town administrator, going from Rex helping writing zoning bylaws, known way to look for zoning bylaws, because that job was written assistant town administrator slash town planner. And that was specific in nature to get it through the town meeting. Because we thought we needed one. I think maybe I will admit that as I am getting older, I'm slowing down a little bit. And there's only so much either myself or the rest of these members, the rest of you that are all volunteers can do. And since we are now looking for a new town assistant town administrator, town planner, and that job description still is in existence to the best of my knowledge, and I'm sure there's enough selectmen here that will correct me if I'm wrong, that I put it on the agenda because as chair, I'd like to see somebody hired that has some experience in planning to fill that position, since number one, that's what it was designed for. Number two, to help with a lot of these kind of things. And I would like to know if we can get a consensus, and if we can, to write just a short letter to the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator that the planning board is in favor of the next assistant town administrator to have planning board experience. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw that out to you. I'm also gonna throw out to you that we are in the midst, we're picking up some pieces from when Joe left, but we are trying to, we are in the process of codifying our zoning bylaws, general bylaws, and other laws within the town of Wellfleet. That would be done by a service who would update our zoning bylaws, clean them up, get capitals, get consistency in all of the laws, probably renumber. But along with that, because that's an ongoing year-to-year contract, would come the ability of the planning board or the town planner to say to the codification company, the planning board is looking to do some work on lot clearing. That codification company could be notified That codification company could be notified and they would forward to us any pertinent information on lot clearing from towns similar to Wellfleet or that anything they feel free of charge is part of our contract. So I'm not saying that's going to take the place of a town planner. I'm saying that at least to let you know, I'm working, trying to get as much help as we can for all of the members, but I'd love to see a town planner or assistant with some experience in town planning to come to our meetings. So when we have something, we know it's going to be done and they're being paid to do the job. Now, I'm going to kick that out to all the members, their feeling on that. David, uh, David Mead Fox was the first one I saw. David Mead Fox.
You're muted, David.
You've run into
That's what I was afraid of, David.
Got to be more awake. You've run into various town planners and, and town assistant administrators more than I have, but it seems to me that, and maybe this, what I'm going to say is a complete non-starter because I know about, something about that there's stress on the town finances. Everybody hates creating new positions, but it seems to me that an Assistant Town Administrator all by itself, not to broaden this too much, Jerry, is probably close to a full-time job. And a town planner, and I would say as per this, the issue that we raised in the letter that went to the Select Board about climate change, a town planner and a climate action coordinator, let's call it for the moment, is also a full-time job. The town planner being the biggest thing and the Assistant Town Administrator is a catch-all position. And I would worry that even someone with experience, the planner part of that job would be secondary and could slip away more and more. When, at a time when we need more planning help and more planning, and we need more help dealing with climate change than ever before. So I'm advocating for two positions. I can't make that happen. I'm just, that's how I see it. For sure, the town planner piece is crucial in my mind, but I don't see how it can be unless it's a really awesome person, the Assistant Town Administrator and the town planner.
Well, to answer that question, then I'll, I'll, to answer just the question, then I'll let it go to the other members.
Yeah.
It did work with Rex Peterson.
Okay, okay.
What's, Wellfleet, as charming, as great as Wellfleet is, we didn't invent the wheel. Rex didn't from scratch when he was town planner, town administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, write all new, brand new bylaws.
Right.
But what he did do, instead of all the members having to go out and look at stuff, he would call Cape Guard Commission, he would call
Yeah.
a couple of different towns, Truro, Eastham, say, what have you got on the books for lot clearing?
Right.
So I
He did it pretty efficiently too, yeah.
I, I think what we're looking at David Mead is, is we've got a job position that's already entitled
Right.
for it, coming up very soon. If in fact, we fill that with someone somewhat qualified, maybe overworked, but at least we get a step in the right direction. And when finally we get a handle on marijuana income, we get a handle on all of the tax on rental units and we get a cushion back in the coffins, might be a better time to say, okay, the town planner confirms that there's a lot of planning that needs to be done. We weren't getting as much out of the codification as we thought. Maybe that's the next step, but I think with the codification, with a part, at least the town planner in place, you know, I forget. I mean, Joe attended some meetings with the planning board, did some things, but you know, wasn't a town planner and didn't have any experience, but tried. This is the gentleman before him. And I've already lost track of who that was. Who was it?
Powers.
Huh?
Powers, right?
No, before Powers, Janet.
Oh. Isn't it Brian Carlson?
Brian Carlson.
Yeah.
No experience whatsoever.
Right.
So I think if you've got some credentials, have had some courses, been in that position, I think it's a step in the right direction. So.
Yeah, no, I agree it may need to be done in phases.
Right. Uh, I think David, David Rowley, do you have something? No, I'm sorry, David. David, hold on.
Yeah, I just got what we voted for 20 years ago, you know, split decision, town planner, TA.
Okay, Beth?
So I think what David Mead Fox is saying is ideal, but that's not really going to happen. So I think we need to, I move, I'm going to make a motion that we send a letter to the Select Board advocating for a skilled Assistant TA with planning experience and skill. And, and I also want to say, as a past school superintendent, who did the same thing with school committee policies, hiring an agency to rewrite and organize your policies and update them and, and make them pristine is worth every penny you could spend.
Thanks, Beth. Anyone else?
I'll second Beth's motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Janet, I see you smiling.
Well, I just, you know, I
Yeah, you're probably looking at your, your phone and seeing a joke, okay?
I'm actually looking at Facebook, but um, I do have my ears open. You know, we have looked for, there is a town planner who I have in mind about stealing away, but I don't know what the, if that would work. But um, you know, since
Well, we like theft in Wellfleet, so go for it.
We like what? Theft? I know.
We like theft. We're pirates, okay?
It all comes down to money, you know? But uh, we've really been complaining about this since Rex. And that, I'm trying to remember, is that like eight years ago?
Well, I think it's
Oh, more than that, yeah.
Is it more than that? Wow.
Yeah.
So, um, so someone told me that uh, no one goes into town planning anymore. No one, no one does that urban development stuff anymore. So, but I, I've taken note, I got your email, I think the other day about requesting it. And um, I will, I'll, you know, talk her some, you know, to Maria because she's the one in charge of that. And I think it's always a good idea.
We need a lot of help in Wellfleet.
Well, well, you know, the other thing is, e- even if you can't find somebody ready for that position, if it's understood that this is a requirement of the position of Assistant Town Manager, that they do this work, it behooves them to get educated, to get interested, to move on. I mean, at least it needs to be clear that that's our expectation.
We, we, I don't want to sound negative, but we hired somebody and paid them training to do it, and we got nothing for our money.
Yeah, maybe after two or three years. So, but that's, we'll, we'll keep trying.
Keep trying. And I think Rebecca, you know, she's looking and I think we've, this, there was
There are quite a few applications that do have planning experience. And Mike Travato went through them before he left and he put them at the top of the list because he, he knew that's what's needed. So um, there are quite a few applications there. And I'll put it on the Select Board agenda for next week, just kind of as a point of business to just
Okay.
relay your concerns about a town planner for the
What I've got is a motion and seconded to write a letter to the Board of Selectmen and the TA confirming that we would like um, them to entertain and reopen that position as Assistant Town Administrator Town Planner. I think that's the motion. If there's no new discussion on that motion.
Helen, bring your hand up.
Yeah, Jerry.
I'm sorry, who? Oh, Beth, okay.
I, I would just like to say it would be nice if someone from the planning board was a participant in that interviewing process.
We have not been asked.
I, I'm saying it would be nice if someone from the planning board was a participant in that decision-making of who's hired, because being a planner and being an Assistant Town Administrator go together, it would be important to have the voice of the planning board on the committee making that choice.
I agree with Beth. I think she's right.
May I speak now? Jerry?
Um.
I need to read you something from the Charter that has to do exactly with what you're talking about. It's in the TA position. Don't forget the TA and the ATA, you're basically one job in a way.
Yeah, okay.
The TA is supposed to do, this is very short, is
Yep, go ahead.
coordinate activities among committees concerned with municipal planning comma, including the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town. That's the first thing we need to remember. So this is something the TA ATA has to do. The second thing is, that position, ATA slash planner has always been that. That's what town meeting appropriated the money for. And that is what is still required for the position. And it fell between the cracks. That's an administrative dysfunction. But I agree with whichever one of you said just now, that this is something, just as you have gotten up to speed as planning board members, you know, reading the state law, reading our own local regulations for, you know, subdivision control and so forth, you know, honing up on your drafting skills for zoning bylaws. This is something that the planner could get up to speed with. And my problem has been over the years that the people that have come into that job since Rex, with the exception of, what was his name, Ten Dream or something, really didn't do that. And they need to, you know, that's an administrative dysfunction. You know, they don't have to be a trained planner to do that. They have to be on the job with it and show up at your meetings. Thank you for letting me vent.
Not a problem. Um, okay, any, anything new? I concur with Beth that it would be nice, since it is a town planner slash Assistant Town Administrator, that a planning board member be in on the interviews, but we can only do what the Selectmen and the Board do. I'm sorry, Rebecca, yeah?
I can make that recommendation to the town administrator if you like. She's all about having a committee for hiring, and I think she, she would be interested in, in hearing what you have to say about it. I'll just talk to her tomorrow and
Okay, and since
Should we add that?
Uh, go ahead, Alfred.
Should we add that? Could Beth add that to her motion?
Well, I thought I did. So, yes.
You did.
Oh, who seconded it?
I think Alfred did, didn't he? Oh.
You seconded the addition.
You seconded the addition as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and when's the cutoff date? Rebecca?
The 22nd of January.
When are they going to start? When are they going to start narrowing it down?
So we'll go over, um, there's quite a few applications, so we'll go over them and see the best, probably the best six, seven, eight candidates.
Who's we?
Uh, the town administrator and I. And then what we'll do is, she likes to form committees to, for a hiring committee. She doesn't like to do it herself because she likes to have other people in the room. It's, it's kind of a really cool hiring process.
So no committee, no, I'm sorry Rebecca, no committee has been appointed yet?
No, no.
A member of this committee should be on that.
All right.
I promise I remember.
So my thought was, okay, if you're going to happen right away, I would say that I would fill the position until we had a meeting and then we could vote on who would be that representative in case time was of the essence. But it sounds like we got enough time for the next meeting to, um, if, if all members say yes, a planning board member should be on there, then we can probably address it at the next meeting. So based on that, and it's, it's, it's already 9:15, um, I'm going to, without anything new, I'm going to, um, the motion's been made, seconded, amended, and seconded. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In unanimous. Liaison reports, UGA, 95 Lawrence Road, update?
Um, the next Lawrence Road meeting, 95 Lawrence Road meeting is on Friday. There hasn't been one in many, many weeks. So not knowing enough about wastewater, I went to the wastewater committee meeting that discussed 95 Lawrence Road. And I can report more later, but basically, you know, I'll report more when I go to the 95 Lawrence Road meeting. But Scott Horsley, the consultant, said that they need an advanced treatment facility to do what they need to do for waste with the development. And that, let's see, this, the treatment plant would serve the housing development, but they would get to a net zero, and I'm not sure exactly what that means, with all three. They talk about the develop, the development itself, three municipal buildings, the school, the police, and the fire, and the local neighborhood. Neighborhood was, uh, well, I think it was Helen Miranda Wilson brought up that there's certain neighborhoods, not necessarily a butters, that probably need this, need this wastewater treatment more than there are butters. But that's, you know, and who should pay for it and so forth are, you know, are still under discussion. And apparently today, the RFP language about wastewater was ready, but I haven't seen it. So I'll just add more next time. That's all I can report.
Okay. Thank you. I had heard something similar. There's, you know, when you're doing a wastewater treatment plant, there's, there's a size involved. And it's like trying to build a house. You can build a house a thousand square feet and you can build a house at 1,800 square feet. It's almost the same amount of money if it's a kitchen and bathroom. So it makes sense that all of a sudden that system might could be larger than what you really need. Um, okay. Other than that, 9:20, we've covered the agenda.
Ah, wait a minute.
Minutes.
Well, before minutes, Muffin, you've, you skipped one thing to be procedural. You didn't do the zoning bylaw definition discussion. That was very specific, and I think you know what that's about, but I would move that we defer that to another day.
Yeah, that's why I thought I did it. I didn't do it. Um,
Just move it to another day. I'm going to make a motion, tick it down.
Okay. Um, Rebecca, that's a, that's a housekeeping item. So would you keep that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Would you keep, um, almost in the line that it is, 2:15, Herring Road? Partial, uh, partial lot release?
Yep.
ADU? Zoning bylaw? Lot clearing?
Pretty much copy and paste the current agenda.
Yeah, you got a couple of things we took care of, but at least those things are on there. And if there's any new problem not required, then we can take a look at that.
Okay. So I'm meeting the first Wednesday of February.
Yes. Everybody in town?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Good. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Move, so moved.
Are you not going to do my minutes?
Oh, I gotta do your minutes, don't I? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody got any changes or deletions or amendments on the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
Second.
You keep that.
Question? You're all tired. Seeing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Aye. Aye.
unanimous. Again, thank you very much. I knew I was throwing a lot at you. You know, I see a couple important people have already left. I, I didn't mean to throw major curves into the